Something is yellow and shining out there. I think it's the sun, something we haven't seen in a while. First, I'll make a motion to reconvene in open session at 7:00. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, I'll make a motion to seal the closed session minutes of the May 8th, 2019 meeting. Is there a second?
Seven.
Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Bourget.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Would you please join me in standing for Roman's silence with a pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Dr. McGee.
Chairman Bourget.
Here.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Here.
Mrs. Nato.
Here.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Here.
I believe we begin with the Wunsacat High School Band in chorus.
Hello, everybody. My name is Edward Tupper, and I'm the vice president of the Wunsacat High School Band. We're coming here tonight to give you a little sample of our upcoming concert on May 23rd. It's at 7:00 PM, and it is our collage concert. It's kind of where we show some pop music, some kind of upbeat music to get you guys going. It's great. It's gonna be a great time. We have some tickets for the school board. And we'd like to give you a little sample of what will be coming up.
Good job, both of you. Looking forward to the concert on the 23rd. Mr. Fox, do you have one second for us? Okay. Thank you again. Would anyone want to address the school committee? Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Carcerfero. I live at 111 Pine Crest Drive in Wunsacat, and I also work at the same Wunsacat for the Blackstone Valley Prevention Coalition, which is formerly the Wunsacat Prevention Coalition. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. And we have to be so clear here. Cindy Stupan, and we are the records on the post-graduation celebration walk-in. So I'd like to speak with all of you this evening. As many of you may know, for the past 11 years, the Prevention Coalition has sponsored, in conjunction with the Spanish Department, and members from the youth, students, and as well as parents, have sponsored the post-graduation walk-in. And it has been here, excuse me, not here, the Wunsacat High School. And registration was at 10:00, and it walks the students till 5:00 in the morning. We have various activities during the evening. It is a free event, and with food, music, there are interactive opportunities. And the cost is roughly about $5,000, and we use grants. And we also fundraise some of the events. This year, the committee explored some additional opportunities. We did look at, again, having post-graduation celebration at the high school, and having a walk-in with the same kind of format. We also kind of took the lead with some of our other cities and towns here in Rhode Island, and looked outside of the city and possibly bus-stacked students to another location. One of the locations was Cinema World, or the Cinema Bowl Ram, and that's in Lincoln. We did look into that, and the cost is a little bit lower, but we would like to entertain that opportunity. It seems as though the committee liked the idea of the students. We kind of did a quick kind of poll with the students, and they liked that idea. It would be bust, it would be the same idea with registering them here at 10:00 PM, and we would get them on a bus, bring them to Lincoln Mall, and they would have the run of bowling and laser tag, they'd have food, they'd have the arcade, and we'd have the caricatures, the music, and a whole host of other events, and it would be there. And again, it would be a walk-in, and they would come home on the bus to the high school. I sent a quick email over to Dr. McGee, and he suggested I come home to see if the school committee would support that particular change in venue, or if he might have any questions as to venue or any concerns. The Prevention Coalition does have insurance for activities such as these. There would be also a reseller there as we do here. We always have a reseller there in the evening to kind of support the activities and just be available. So I'm here tonight to present the idea. It's the first time we have in over a run of years thought of bringing it outside of the high school. So I don't know, Cynthia Denise, if you have anything you'd like to say?
Hi, Cindy Stupan. I just want to say, on top of everything that she has noted, home point in this night is, regardless if we have it at the high school, if we have it at Cinema World, it's a great night for all the graduates to get together one last time and party in a safe environment. I've been along with Cindy's, run alongside of her last few years, trying to continue this event for just within some Wunsacat, and it's been a tremendous turnout. The kids who come are so appreciative of it. It's pretty much bottom line. We want to keep our kids, and we walked the streets after graduation, out of drugs, no drinking, no driving, and kind of had a nice night with everyone. So this year, trying to put it off to Cinema World, the bowling alley over there, it also helps us with the chaperoning. We don't need as many chaperones. That's been something that has been a problem trying to get in the years, and this year, I think, we'll be able to manage it with the amount of parents that have already pre-signed up, do this practically every year. And plus, we also have the staff from the CW, that's what it's called, CW lanes, that will also be on hand to help us, not control the kids, but part of that, so to say. So I wish that you consider this, and in hopes that we can at least explore this for this year and years to come. I'm not sure 100% of the procedure, but I would like to know if that's something that we can look at tonight, and how we need to get this moved forward quite quickly, because we're living in a wonder. Thank you.
So I'd be happy to answer any questions. As we know, the research shows, unfortunately, graduation night is one of the scariest nights and riskiest nights. We used to be out on the road, or at any location, or, you know, there were many parties going on, and unfortunately, there are substances available, or should be available, which are not there. So we're trying to kind of mitigate those kinds of risks for our youth. So I would hope you would consider this presentation.
Vice Chair Burke.
What percentage of the senior class is usually involved? What percentage of the senior class is usually involved?
We've had anywhere between 30 and 40%, up to 50% for some years.
And you have sufficient chaperones this year to build the parents?
We do. We have parents, and they're required to have a VCI check as well, as the school requires. So there has to be enough to date VCI checks.
You could say there was an extra cost this year?
It will be a little bit more in cost, but we are willing to do some fundraising, additional fundraising.
How much is it?
So it's about $2,000 additional.
Oh, that's it?
Right.
All right, thank you.
That's what we thought. We thought it would be an astronomical cost. We thought it'd be double, but it won't. So we thought we'd make that.
In my career, I have chaperones, walk-ins. I've given the notice to the young teachers, I don't do that anymore, so I appreciate that you folks are still out there chaperoning these walk-ins.
It's a long night, but it's really great to see the new show themselves.
So logistically, are you saying that the day of graduation, at night, the kids, they have been coming back to the high school after graduation?
Yes.
And spent, what is it, the whole night? What are they doing? They sleep in?
Yes, they're, so it's, it's a walk-in, so they register at 10:00. So they'll register for the event prior to that evening. And then that night, they come in at 10:00. And once they're in, they're in for the evening. And they're there till 5:00 in the morning, so.
So somebody has to come and get them, or they've got their own transportation?
That is right.
Now, if you're doing this, if you're thinking of doing this at Lincoln Mall, at the CW, and you're going to rent out the place?
Yes.
So they have to find a transportation, no? What are you going to do, bussing?
No, yes, we would provide busing. They would have to be at the high school, and they'd have to register as they have in the past. And then we put them on a bus. They come to Lincoln with us, and then they have to take the bus home, and we bring them back to the high school.
Okay, so the arrangements would have to be for the buses, the school buses, to be there at some time to get them over for around 10:00?
Yes, probably about 10:30, we'll leave the high school.
Hopefully, when the buses arrive, there are children on the bus. We would hope, right? We would hope. What else, what else, what else, logistically, I've been, I go to Lincoln Mall a lot, so I am familiar with the CW. So how logistic, I mean, it's easier in Wunsacat, you just throw them in the gym, right? Is that where you go? No?
No.
We do the whole.
The whole school?
The whole school.
Okay.
Just the first, the first floor.
Right, so now, the CW sort of limited, well, is the theater, you're not, no theater? No?
No, that would be an additional, yeah.
So the CW, is it that big to, because you're talking about 100 kids, if you've had half the flat, or more?
Yes.
Plus parents, plus whoever's chaperoning. And have you gone there and figured out they've got plenty of room?
Yes, so they would have access to the bowling alley.
Right.
There are a number of lanes there. They could do the arcade, which is in there. They have the, a laser tag. And they have where the food vendor is. And you would have two buffets that night, one when they got there, one for breakfast, which is included. And then they have a new golf.
Yes, they do.
Yeah, and then we have all the outsides. The businesses are all closed, because it's 10:00, the mall is closed. So we would have the outside, so we would do caricatures, we've done art in the past, we've done Zumba. We've had many activities. There's going to be music throughout the night. So there's opportunities for other activities in that large hallway.
But in that hallway, can't you get to the theater? So are you going to stop them? I mean, because I'm just saying, logistically, when people come in, go to the movies, they're still going to do that, right? Or is the place closed? The whole place is closed?
Yeah, it's closed at that time. I think the last movie lets out maybe about 11:00 or 11:15. So the kids are not going into the movie area. Yeah, and they have staff there that will also be assisting with that. Yeah, because we'll just use most of the arcade area.
Have you spoken to the folks at the high school to determine whether or not the kids and everybody want to do this? You know, we can certainly go, yay, yay, whatever, but our vote doesn't mean anything if the students don't want to do this, because we haven't heard, this is the first I hear of it.
Yeah, and this has been something we've thought about kind of late in the game. We had planned on having it as a high school, and then this opportunity presented itself, so we explored it. So I know their students have talked to their friends, and there seems to be an interest. And then we can do a quick survey on Facebook. We want to make sure it would be acceptable before we kind of put it out there.
Do I want to check with the principal?
We have.
We did.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Mm-hmm, we have. Yes, and Mr. Goulet has been part of the conversation throughout. In Cardinal, we've kept Mr. Henderson up to date as well.
Mrs. Capwell.
Is this something they determined? Is this something that CW offers regularly, so they, their practice at this? They know they have guidance that they can write?
Yeah, it's a package that they offer, yeah.
And I kind of just want to go back to where you were going with the student accessibility to the rest of the mall, and how do you control that? So I would just ask that you, if there isn't an actual barrier or restriction, that we put some thought around that?
Yeah.
And then lastly, I think you said it, but I just want to reconfirm. You said you can carry the insurance?
We do. And we have to provide that when we use the high school as well.
Okay. But after those three questions, I'll just give my comments. I think it's, I think it's a really good idea. I love that you're trying to rethink and make it new in a sense.
Thank you.
Yeah, it sounds like a lot of fun. I'm sure the boys and girls are going to love it. Any other, any other comments?
Excuse me, I just wanted to check. There is mall security there as well, that will be there that night. We've already looked into that, in addition to everything. I'm accessible, but Dr. McGee can share my contact if anybody has any additional information I may have.
We've rolled on it.
Yeah, it's something, it's something we need to approve. It's definitely a field, it's a field trip, in a sense, it's a field trip, so. So we should put this on the agenda next time.
If it's not on the agenda, you can't, you cannot vote on it.
That's what I mean. It's got to come to the agenda.
Yeah.
Right. So let's do that. We'll put that on the agenda next time. And you can come and visit again, because we may have more questions, so be very glad if you came back.
I'd be happy to visit again. Thank you.
Dr. McGee?
I would just, I would provide my support. I mean, I've had some conversations with Mrs. Carcerfero, and, yeah, I think this would be a great opportunity for our kids. And especially, I know, I understand that other school districts have done this and do this typically, so it isn't something new, and the folks at Lincoln Mall are used to doing this as well. So I think this would, personally, I think this would be a great opportunity for our kids.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your presentation. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the school committee? There are none? We'll go into recognitions and announcements. Dr. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I want to first recognize all the teachers and staff in the Wunsacat Education Department. As you may know, this week is Teacher Appreciation Week, and I just want to extend a heartfelt thank you and gratitude to all the teachers and staff who work in the Wunsacat Education Department. They work tirelessly for our students. Their dedication is second to none, and I just want to let them know publicly how much I and we in the Wunsacat Education Department appreciate all they do on a daily basis. Today is also National Nurses Day, so I want to recognize all of the nurse teachers we have in our district. They, again, work very hard, taking care of our students on a daily basis, and we appreciate all of the hard work that they do. Third thing I would like to announce is, we were very lucky. We all know we have some great teachers here in the Wunsacat Education Department. Today, we had a visitor at Hamlet Middle School, and you may have seen this segment on Channel 10 with Patrice Wood. They have the Golden Apple Award winner. And we are very fortunate to have this Golden Apple Award winner coming from Hamlet Middle School, and I invited her here this evening. Holly, if you could just stand up. Holly, remember.
Thank you.
Holly is a traditional teacher at Hamlet Middle School, and Holly's been in the district for many years. I remember Holly, a long time ago, the old middle school, when Holly first started, she was in the basement. And she is a phenomenal teacher, and we're very, very proud of all the work she does. She is so dedicated to her students and to this community, so I want to congratulate you, Holly, on a job well done.
Thank you.
Dr. McGee, could you tell the, tell us in the audience when that will be on?
May 23rd. May 23rd.
May 23rd. Thank you very much. We should all tweet it.
On behalf of KKM, Ms. Karen Rizzo, excuse me, who's the vice president of Finance and Administration, made several trips with her vehicle full of items to donate to the Wunsacat schools. We were able to distribute through her, through her donation notebooks, teacher agendas, binders, folders, winter gloves, tissues, Band-Aids, just to name a few items to all the schools within our district. With this donation, we were able to provide medical supplies to the athletic director. In addition, the items that we were not able to distribute throughout the district directly were shared with the local homeless shelter in Thundermist Health Hut, which is located at Wunsacat High School. Some of the items included air supplies, lotions, body soap, laundry detergent, just to name a few items. It's a great pleasure that I give special thanks, on behalf of the Wunsacat Education Department, to Karen and KKM for their generous donation that we were able to share with our students and the community at large. We're extremely proud to announce that Kylie Gervais, we'll remember this, Mr. Burke and Mrs. Nato from the Sodexo Food Challenge recently. Kylie Gervais is a 4th grade student at Harris Elementary School. She was selected as the top 40 regional finalist in this year's National Future Chef Challenge. Kylie's Fiesta Bit Healthy Mexican Recipe, and entry of vegan taco with rice and beans, won several prizes, including a Nintendo Switch game console and a fitness trapper. Congratulations and thank you to Kylie for representing the excellence found within our Wunsacat schools. This Friday, May 10th, at 7:00 PM, at Villanova Middle School, the Wunsacat Middle School Theater Club will produce Shrek the Musical Junior. Doors open at 7:00, at 6:00. Tickets are $10 at the door and $8 in advance. They are sold by the Middle School Theater Club. Students, finally, during the last weekend in April, the Smile High School Engineering Challenge took place. Wunsacat High School was represented by 13 students with their teachers Ethel Locke and Julia Rassini. Students designed, built, and tested remotely operated underwater vehicles that had to deliver yellow pool rings to an underwater obstacle at the URI Toodle Competition Pool. The best team delivered six rings in 10 minutes. Students worked with URI mentors from engineering and corporate mentors from Amgen, Schneider Electric, and NUWC. It was a very intense and successful challenge. They also went to a workshop on bioinformatics and action of enzymes, led by URI Cell and Molecular Biology Professor Dr. Ying Zhang and her graduate students. Smile students learned about the specifics of enzymes and their application in discovering new species from the ocean depths. They all felt they were learning new concepts presented in their high school classes. Next year, there are eight 11th graders moving up to the high school level Smile, with nine students moving up from grades 9 to 11. Congratulations on your accomplishments in this program. We look forward to hearing some more great things from these students in the future. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Dr. McGee, any school committee member have any comments? Vice Chairman?
I just want to add my congratulations to Kylie, as Dr. McGee has mentioned, and yes, Dr. McGee, Mrs. Nato, and I, we were the first taste testers of this vegan taco, and we proved, and we sent her on the way, and we have a great problem with her, so congratulations, Kylie.
Anyone else? I'll make a motion to place the report on file. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the April 24, 2019, open session minutes meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections, deletions, adjustments? There are none? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Bourget.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Next, we'll look at the consent agenda. I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Ms. Capwell. Is there any school committee member that would like to take any item out of order at this time? There are none? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Bourget.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Next, we'll go into communications, and Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have here this evening from Connecting Children and Families, Sandra Costa and Terry Kurpin, I think, is out there also. There, there she is. So just to frame a little bit of what Sandra's going to talk about, CCF, as you know, have been wonderful partners with the Wunsacat Education Department for many, many years, providing opportunities for our students, both after school, during the school day, before the school day, and also during the summer months. And Sandra is here to talk to you a little bit about what CCF is going to be providing our students this summer.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Again, my name is Sandra Costa. I'm the director of schooling programs for connecting patrol families. So our summer programs, we offer four six-week summer programs to approximately 285 Wunsacat students in grades K through 12. Our Camp Discovery is for grades K through 2, Chilling and Skilling, grades 3 to 5. Get Connected Summer Camp at WMS, grades 6 through 8, and Stay Connected Summer Camp at WHS for incoming 9th graders. All four of our summer programs begin on Monday, July 8th, and then the Friday, August 16th. We serve breakfast and lunch every day at all of the camps. We provide field trips every week, such as Mystic Aquarium, the School of Aurora in Newport, kayaking with naturalists, various Susan Peaches. This year, the middle and high school students will also visit companies and colleges. We also offer guest speaker presentations from partners such as Wutheroom, Audubon Society in Rhode Island, and Math Science. And we host a family celebration on the last day, where students perform and showcase the work they completed during the six weeks in the program. Service learning is an important part of our summer learning programs. Students brainstorm ideas and routes, and they implement projects to benefit the Wunsacat community. Our Camp Discovery, we offer to 60 students in grades K through 2. Our Camp Discovery, we offer to 60 students in grades K through 2. They participate in literacy, science, math, art, musical, and physical education activities in a supportive learning environment. This program will take place at Little Park Elementary School, Monday through Friday, from 8:00 AM to 12:30 PM. At Chilling and Skilling, math and literacy curriculum is integrated into enrichment activities, providing 120 students in grades 3 to 5, an alternative to summer camp that helps prevent summer learning loss. This summer, the camp theme is "Compose Your Symphony," which will be infused into the music, art, theater, environmental science, financial literacy, sports, and cooking activities. Chilling and Skilling will take place at Coleman Elementary School and other locations throughout Wunsacat, Monday through Friday, from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Get Connected Summer Camp at Wunsacat Middle School provides 65 students in grades 6 to 8 for career exploration opportunities in the area of culinary hospitality, STEAM, science, technology, engineering, art, and math, and business, financial literacy. Students will engage in leadership, team building, music, and sports activities. Get Connected is also designed to assist incoming 6th graders with the transition from elementary school to middle school. Get Connected will take place at the Villanova Middle School, Monday through Friday, from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And finally, Stay Connected Summer Camp at WHS is a new summer learning program designed to assist 40 incoming 9th graders with the transition from middle school to high school, with a focus on students with social-emotional challenges. Stay Connected will feature career exploration activities in the areas of culinary arts, STEAM, science, technology, engineering, art, math, and business, financial literacy. There will also be a focus on leadership pathway, engaging students to develop communication skills, teamwork, critical thinking skills, and perseverance to become leadership experts upon entering the 9th grade. Social-emotional skill building will include independence, study skills, self-awareness and management, as well as decision-making. An Individual Learning Plan is a new Wunsacat Education Department-approved. Richer Picture is the online IOP platform that will identify students' strengths and passions and will provide resources to support student learning. An IOP will be created for each Stay Connected participant in the summer and continue throughout their high school career. There will also be a Strengths Explorer Assessment to help students discover their top three strengths. Students will participate in weekly activities designed to reinforce or grow identified strengths. There will be a half-credit for community service for completion of a service learning project for the summer, then another opportunity to get another half-credit for community service after completion of the after-school leadership community service program during the school year. High school peer mentors will work with incoming 9th graders to help with the transition from middle school to high school in the summer and continue throughout the school year. And finally, and the most exciting part, is that Stay Connected participants will receive a $150 stipend for completion of the six-week program. Stay Connected will take place at Wunsacat High School, Monday through Friday, from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. For more information on the summer programs, please contact Connecting Patrol Families or CCF at 401-766-3384, or visit CCF's website at www.ccfcenter.org. And registration forms will be available tomorrow at the schools. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds like a great program. Any comments, questions? Dr. McGee?
I just want to say to Mrs. Costa, you know, and CCF, they are such wonderful partners. I'm excited about all the programs and opportunities that they're going to provide our students this summer. I'm really excited about the Stay Connected at the high school. You know, we met, a group of us have met a few times over the last couple of months to look at how we can improve the transition from the 8th grade to the 9th grade at the high school. And we're really excited about some of these opportunities incorporating the new individual learning plans that those students will be able to work on during the course of these six weeks. Also, typically, we often, and because we need to, we often focus on at-risk students. This Stay Connected is not just focusing on at-risk students. This could be those students who fall through the cracks just because they come to school, they do what they're supposed to, but they're not necessarily completely connected when they get to the high school. And that sometimes is a student that we lose as well. So I'm excited that we're going to give students this opportunity beyond just those that are at risk. We certainly will have some at-risk students, but this is also going to be supporting those students who are doing what they're supposed to be doing and are working on it, but yet may need some support with that transition. So I think it's a great rating program that we're providing our students.
My question is, how are you planning on advertising this program? Because if the word gets out, and especially if the programs are described, it's a great alternative to summer camps, because we do have quite a few summer camps in the area. So, you know, I encourage you to hit the airwaves, the newspapers, as much as you possibly can, and discuss them in classrooms, because the more it's spoken of, the better chance you'll have in filling the photo.
Absolutely. Typically, our summer programs do fill up very quickly.
Right.
The Stay Connected camp is a unique camp because we're incorporating all of those new initiatives into the camp. So we will distribute to all 8th graders at both Hamlet and Villanova schools, and we'll also follow that with a parent letter as well, explaining what the program is in more detail to hopefully get more students involved in the program. And that's why we also did the $150 stipend, to really give an incentive for the students to join that program.
Great. Just keep us informed.
Absolutely.
Don't be a stranger.
Come and visit. Okay, great.
Let us know what you're doing.
I appreciate the opportunity. Thanks so much.
Thanks again. Next, we'll go into the School Committee Reports. We'll start at the Policy Subcommittee. Ms. Kapiskas, Chair Burke, Vice Chair Burke. Ms. Kapiskas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Policy Subcommittee met on May 2nd, 2019. We discussed several things. A prime thing on our agenda was review of the transgender policy, which had been tabled at our last school committee meeting, a further consideration by the Subcommittee. I'll defer the discussion of that until it is reached on the agenda, I assume that makes more sense. The other policies that were discussed, to a much lesser degree at Policy Subcommittee, were our field trip policy, which upon review appears to be woefully inadequate. Quite frankly, we took a look at it because of the Commissioner's guidance with regard to how field trips are to be funded up in the basic education plan. And as a result, we discovered that there are some other changes that probably need to be made to the field trip policy. So that is teed up on our agenda. The next item that's teed up our agenda, and I think probably may take priority over the field trips, is issues around student violence, what the appropriate intervention should be, and the discarding of videotape of such incidents of violence by students or maybe even staff. We're going to be looking at our crisis prevention policy and our restraint policy as to how they impact the response to student violence, be it student on student or student on staff. And we've all discussed the issue that we really cannot rely upon school resource officers or SROs to be there to resolve these issues for us, because they're stretched far too thin over big schools with large populations. The last policy that was discussed the most briefly was the use of medical marijuana on school grounds. It's probably going to be backburnered, but that is a issue that we will be dealing with. Other districts are going to be dealing with it as well. But we're not there yet. We haven't been asked that on the wheel, but it is a policy we are working on. The meeting adjourned, and our next meeting is March...
May.
Excuse me, May 29th at 4:00 PM at the Long Wunsacat Middle School at Hamlet, Room 124.
Ms. Kapiskas, do you believe that the policies other than transgender, which we will be dealing with later on tonight, will be implemented before the school year, except for the backburner policy? But the other two, do you think they'll be brought to the school committee by, before the end of the school year?
It is my hope and plan to bring the school violence policy forth, because I believe that is of the greatest importance. With regards to the field trip policy, I don't know that we could possibly get that done in time to deal with the many year-end field trips that are planned over the next month or so. So I don't think that will necessarily be in place prior to the end of school in June.
Do we know how the district is handling the field trips based on the school policy at this point? That's Dr. McGee.
So it's not a new policy, per se. It's a, the outgoing Commissioner, the former Commissioner Wagner, had issued this based on a situation in East Greenwich. And his recommendation in his letter was that school districts not have students and their families pay to go on to field trips. You could fundraise, but the fundraising would have to include all students. And so if you fundraised, but there were still certain students who maybe didn't fundraise enough money, that would be excluded. You could not do that. So in lack of a policy, and that was just a guidance of the Commissioner, we're going to continue to treat field trips the way we've treated them until we look at our policy and come up with a modification of the policy.
I know the new Commissioner, well, she's new, has any indication that this policy will be, or the guidance will be continued, or we don't know yet?
We don't know yet.
Okay. Any other comments? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the Policy Subcommittee Report. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Mrs. Nato. All in favor?
Aye.
Again, I'll turn to you, Mrs. Kapiskas, for CLAC report.
The CLAC also met on May 2nd at 6:30 PM here at Wunsacat Middle School at Hamlet. We first began our meeting by introducing ourselves, as we always do to everyone else present. Under Old Business, we received an update of the Wunsacat Middle School Behavioral Program from Bill Colley, who's the Middle School Elementary Special Ed Chair, providing handouts to all those Crescent Army program. Parent Support Group meetings were scheduled through the summer. That is a p-earl way gathering of parents, where we don't necessarily discuss special ed, but kind of commiserate. Our next gathering is tomorrow night at Chello's at 6:15. If you are planning to attend, please send an email to wunsacat_clac@whale.com so that we can have an accurate count for the rest of our. We're provided an update on the J-2-Dre program at URI, which was impacted by World to Rule, and as a result, our students, we will have, probably have 15 to 20 students who will be attending a half-day program as opposed to a whole-day program. And we thank the Rhode Island Department of Health for accommodating us in that way. We received an update on the state support visit for special education, but I'll defer to Dr. Sullivan when the appropriate time appears to advise us as to the results of that visit. We received an update on YCAST testing, that it is concluded. And then currently, DLM, or Dynamic Learning Maps Testing, is proceeding smoothly with regard to our alternative assessment students, and that ends on May 24th. Actually, new business. We discussed an update to the National Honor Society investigation about district students' issues that is being worked on by council. We discussed that it will be on next month's, next meeting's agenda, an amendment to the bylaws of the CLAC to formally add a representative to the Wunsacat Act as an official officer above the CLAC. And it was approved by the CLAC, and that will be before the school committee on the next agenda for its approval. Dr. Sullivan reviewed the graduation policy as it relates to our district students in terms of whether or not they are being required to comply with the electronic portfolio, or they'll be allowed to participate in the standard hard copied portfolio. Dr. Sullivan provided us with an update as to the extended school year ESY Summer Program. Almodriani, Acting Facilities Director, informed us that the first responders, police and fire, continue to make their visits to our schools so that children can learn what they look like and not be afraid of particular points applying to come in in regular clothing, changing into their turnout gear and then changing back into their regular clothes, and the children will learn that those people in those outfits are not really strange monsters, but they're here to help you. We talked about changes to special education programming, including the big one, which is the pre-K agenerative model, which is supposed to be expanded statewide. And the Wunsacat Middle School are trying to move away from self-contained departmental classes at this point. This year, the rule was made with regards to social studies, gets moved into inclusion rooms, but for the 9th grade, because they've already agreed to some of the changes. And next year, the plan is to move science into the inclusion rooms as well. As school committee liaison, I provided an update as to the transgender policy, the field trip policy, and issues around hearing loss. The Chair provided notice of a Department of Health organized event pursuant to hearing loss, which is essentially a playdate in CCOMP, that may be lifted from 3 to 5. Parents seeking further information can acquire at wunsacat_clac@whale.com. The next and final meeting of the school year for CLAC is on Thursday, June 6th, 2019, at 6:30 PM, again, Wunsacat Middle School at Hamlet, Room 124. Meeting adjourned at 7:46.
Thank you, Mrs. Kapiskas. Anyone have any comments or questions? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the CLAC report. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll go into the, get the reports on the Health and Wellness Subcommittee. Vice Chair Burke.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Health and Wellness Subcommittee last met April 8th, which is the second Monday of the month, which is our consistent meeting time, the second Sunday of the month. At this last meeting, we had a presentation, especially from Chris Roy, who presented to us the Project Aware Initiative and the advances that they have started to make in the schools with professional development, with the teachers, especially around our historic justice. We also continued to discuss our BID process and working through the, our food services. And then our next meeting, our next meeting is going to be next Monday, May 13th, at 4 o'clock, also in this building, Room 124. And we will continue to look at the BID process for our food services. We also have to continue to finalize our evaluation process to see how many of initiatives of the Health and Wellness Program are being presented in the schools. And anyone is invited to please come to my meetings. Once again, the next one is May 13th at 4 o'clock, Room 124, right in this building. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chair Burke. Any questions or comments from the committee? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the Health and Wellness Subcommittee Report. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll talk a little bit about the annual meeting of the Rhode Island School Committee Association. On April 27th, Vice Chair Burke, Mrs. Kapiskas, myself, and Ms. Report attended the annual meeting of the Rhode Island Association of School Committees. And it's very, it serves two purposes. Obviously, it gives us a lot of instruction and education with regards to what's going on in the various districts of our state. We also get to hear interesting speakers and really develop relationships amongst the school committee folks and superintendents that attend, as well as some of the attorneys that attend. So it's a very productive meeting. Also, just to let everyone know, that every school committee person is required to get six hours of continued education in the one calendar, in the one school year. That's how we do it. And frankly, we get credit cards. You know, we get credits for attending these meetings, and, you know, it's not just the annual meeting, but the periodic meetings that we attend, and they're very interesting. At this meeting, you know, we talked about various topics. We heard presentations on Rhode Island Foundation's Long-Term Education Planning Committee. We heard proposed legislation on school governance, and we heard a topic, the topic was empowering school improvement teams for site-based management. We also had a discussion in President's We also had a discussion and presentation on the Massachusetts Governance Model. You know, Massachusetts has notably the best education programs in the country. And so everybody looks to them, and it's always good to hear what they're doing well. Then we had lunch, and I thought in the afternoon, we might start falling asleep. Because after lunch, you sort of doze off. We had one more major presentation. However, I found that this one, this presentation for me, was a very interesting one because the Cumberland School District, the superintendent and the assistant superintendent, gave us a presentation on their Y-CAS success. How did they succeed in getting scores that placed them third this past year? And so over the last five years, they've grown from like 17%, 17th place in the state to like 10 and 5, and now they were 4, and now they're 3. It was very interesting to hear from both the superintendent and assistant superintendent. And their focus, frankly, is curriculum. The superintendent stated, "I look at my teachers, and their job is to make sure that every student in our school district meets the level of education." So if they all meet their levels, can we make sure? And we constantly monitor this through visits and discussions, as well as PD development. And monitoring, and getting data from the various classes in the schools, from the principals. They have, they have, they've dedicated resources for studying this and to constantly make improvements. Because the one thing that hit me was, if you think you're not doing well because of your demographics, then you've already lost. Demographics is one thing, but you need to get over that hump and really focus on try to improve the programs, the teaching and learning. And so I was wide awake. I think all of us were. It was a very good presentation, and hopefully, we can take some of that information here in the district. Obviously, Woodstock is not Cumberland. But there were some great ideas that were described in this session that I think we can take away. And hopefully, this summer, we will have a retreat. Right, Dr. McGee? A retreat of administrators and principals and school committee people. So we put our heads together and see what can we do to improve the teaching and learning experience for our students, and that we don't quit. Never mind that we have a lot of hardship, we have, we have various nationalities, we have demographics that other districts don't have. So let's take what we have, and we have a lot of good people that can address these issues, and hopefully, make some improvements to our education systems and programs. And we may tick up in terms of how well we do the exams. Because if our programs are not comparable, consistent with what the students are asked to answer on those tests, how can we expect them to do well? So what we gotta do is work even harder to try to get their experience better, and it'll translate into better scores. Is there, you may want to add something?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to add one comment.
Sure.
Massachusetts in 1993 passed educational reform. That began the path of Massachusetts to become the number one school in the country. And one of the reasons they did that, or they became the number one school, is because they remained consistent with expectations and testing. They also put money, when it was available, it wasn't always available, but often, they would put money behind these programs and the desire to do well on these tests. So consistency became the big thing. And it became, it troubled to me, as I got involved in Rhode Island education, the amount of change that goes on. Over the last five years, I think there's been four different tests that the students have had to be measured by. I'm, I'm, maybe, maybe off a little bit. But you can't keep changing your mind. You can't keep changing what you expect of your students. Now, that's one little factor. It's not the whole factor, okay? But I would like, and I hope that all the educational voices in the state can remind our assembly to keep consistent. Stop changing, changing, changing. Keep putting, you know, the correct emphasis behind the programs in place. And I think if the re-OS tests continue along, well, our scores will go up. They will go up. And I think that's the goal that we all have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Burke, you reminded me of two other things. We heard one of the reasons that Cumberland was successful is they keep saying, stay the course. Don't just do something haphazardly and then walk away from the program. Make sure you stay that course. The other thing is, as we know, is that the Supreme Court of Rhode Island there was a decision made that students from Rhode Island don't have a right to education. Where in Massachusetts, there is a right to education. And until that happens, we're always going to be behind the eight ball. We're always going to be behind. Because we need to have students have a right to education where the money is, you know, there's a limited amount of money, but it's like squeezing a toothpaste. War could be allocated to education if every child had the right to an education. Mrs. Kapiskas?
I have just one very brief comment, follow-up on Mr. Burke's comments. Everybody's interested to see what the new commissioner is going to be like. And everything I've read and seen about her so far encourages me that she appears to be a stay-the-course kind of person. That could be a bad thing, but I don't think she means it that way. I think she means you can't expect success if you keep changing the route. You need to stay on the same route. You need to keep following the same path until we can develop a curriculum that appropriately addresses the needs of all students in the state so they can all be successful. And I find that very encouraging and refreshing. Not that Wagner wasn't of the same ilk, but I'm hopeful that she's kind of hit the ground running, that she would encourage us staying with the Y-CAS and not moving from the kneecap to the part, to the whatever the new test is. And I hope that we stay with one test, whatever that test is. I just hope to stay.
Okay. Anyone else? I will entertain a motion to receive and place on file the Rhode Island School Committee Association report.
Second.
No, is there a motion?
Oh, I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. No, it's fine. Now we'll go into conferences and discussions, technology update. I'll turn it over to Mr. Notoarianni.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The maproom in front of you outlines some of the prior issues we updated at the last meeting. We did a break, we replaced all the wireless access points at home elementary and citizens. We patched and updated our servers, and we took care of the civil rights data collection that was submitted on time to the federal government. The following tasks and projects will be completed throughout the district throughout the month of May for service and support function, which will continue to support the DLM, Open Assessment, along with the Next Generation Science Analysis Assessment that's going on in the school buildings. In terms of infrastructure, the Technology Department, along with the Facilities Department, we'll be replacing the security camera system, along with the access control system, starting at the McFeed Administration Building. And we will work our way throughout all of the buildings in the district. In-house staff will be installing this equipment so that it will be a savings for the district rather than contracting out with different vendors. Under data, state and federal reporting, the following submissions are due during the month of May. Teacher Course Section Student, which is more or less a listing of every teacher, what courses and students are in those classes. That goes to the state for all the different jurisdictions that they do. Specialized Census Collection will be going on. The data clerk works in my department, along as well as the Special Ed Department, so with Dr. Sullivan on that report, and the Early Intervening Services Report. So those three reports are due for the month of May. That's what's going on activity-wise. With regard to the reports from our work order system, approximately 250 work orders were submitted during the last 30 days, of which 241 were closed, four were declined, two are in progress, two are waiting for vendor support, and one is brand new. Under instant statistics, we finally reached the point we've got down to a two-day response time, which is what we like to see here in the district, which is way no more than two days. Most times, it's much less than that. However, if you average things out, with larger projects or a larger issue, that's the two-day mark. Most times, we see responses in the same day. I will note right here, while it's not on record, for the first time, the three, well, for the first time this school year, we did zero work orders two weeks ago. So the technology staff has done an excellent job. The technicians are doing a fantastic job. And they're responding very quickly to the needs of the teachers and the students. And lastly, is the customer satisfaction report, which I think reflects what I just stated. As you can see, everything in green is, those teachers are users who are satisfied. There were two responses where they dissatisfied. Both cases were instances where they requested something that the district does not do because it's a policy or procedure, which I sent an email explaining, and they were totally understanding. And there was, you know, nothing more to further report than that. So that concludes my technology report for the meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Notoarianni. Any comments or questions? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the technology report. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Notoarianni, I'm going to turn it over to you, the facilities update.
So for my facilities update, Mr. Chairman, members of committee. At the last meeting, I updated you what we projected we would be doing during the month of April. During the month of April, we replaced all of the classroom doors with a tech center. We replaced the original water fountains with new ADA accessible units. But please note, apparently, one came with a manufacturer's defect. So we will have to go back and swap that out, but it was installed. We repaired the pre-K or the early childhood gate, which has been broken for a period of time. We replaced and repaired the rubber core under the playground equipment in the playground area for childcare. We installed a security camera outside the pre-K entrance. So the pre-K or early childhood teacher requested a camera so that they could see who was entering to pick up their child. We installed that along with the doorbell. We had eastern landscaping come out, remove brush and trees and overgrowth in the playground so the students could go off there and start using it, along with some dead tree limbs. They were opening the property of Savoy Elementary. And we hung banners at Woodstock High School along the light posts. If you pass by Cass Avenue, the banners purchased by Mr. Henderson, it's his idea, but they look, I think, very, very, very nice. They're nice.
Very nice.
The following projects will be completed during the month of May. District wired will be fertilizing, seeding, and mulching throughout all of the school property. We're repairing any and all fire deficiencies based on the fire inspection reports. The initial spring cleanup is concluded. We are doing, or in the process of doing, fence repairs at Barry Field, both here, Citizen Savoy and Aris. Specifically, Barry Field, as we mentioned, because we're speaking publicly, there were two residents that had requests because the field of fencing got knocked down. I visited with both of them and assured them the fence company would be out. They came out earlier today. We hope to have that repaired within the next few weeks. We are filling potholes between the parking lots with cold patch, which is a temporary fix until we can afford to have them properly patched with, you know, through a paving company. And we'll be establishing a schedule with the City Highway Department to have the city street sweepers clean the school parking lots. Savoy was done over the past weekend, and we anticipate, once we have a final schedule, to have all parking lots swept by the street sweepers from all the sand that we put down there in the snowstorm.
Sure.
Woodstock High School Tech Center will be receiving approximately 20 pieces of shelving in glass doors. That was installed actually today. All broken sidewalks and curbs have been dug out as best we can. We're looking to see how we can cement and repair those. And we're replacing all the toggle lights, which is, you know, is a process that will continue until it's completed. Fire Marshal has, I believe, two more inspections, and then we will be done. We will have all of the reports in for the next few weeks. We're making necessary repairs in for compliance. And lastly, the facilities custodial survey closed on Friday, April 12th. We received over 500 responses. I'm in the process of dividing those into three different buckets. One bucket being those items that we can repair in-house with the staff that we have here. The second bucket will be those projects that we have a contractor work on that we could use local dollars or grant funding to make repairs. And that third bucket would be the items that go into the 5-year capital plan, which we will be proposing to the committee of Rhode Island inform. Aside from that, Mr. Chairman, members of committee, the instant statistics, again, they're not an accurate picture because of the fact that we respond to emergencies, but we received approximately 130 work orders. 71 new, 31 were closed, 14 are currently in progress, 16 are currently assigned, two in progress. Couple were declined, several do fit, and some are resolved, and then just move into the closer section. The average response time is 15 days, which I, as I say, never read the report, and I think we should probably take it out, because it's not an accurate reflection of how long it takes. But it is a report that I put out there. In most days, it takes less than, it doesn't take 15 days to fix something. If there's an emergency, we're there, and we're there within, as fast as it takes us to drive a vehicle across the city. But if you average it based on just the work order system, it's not an accurate number, but that's what it averages. And the last report's customer satisfaction. As you can see, green means that the staff are satisfied. Yellow, they're not satisfied. In the past 30 days, while we haven't had many responses, they've been two dissatisfied individuals. Aside from that, everyone else has been satisfied with the work completed by the staff.
Any reasons you want to share why they're not satisfied?
Unfortunately, Mr. Chairman, I did not follow up on these two particular ones as to why they were not satisfied. I certainly could, but I didn't look into it. Because normally, this is a response we give back to the building secretary. So I have to do a little digging on that, but I certainly, I think in the future, I will do that for anybody.
Okay. While we're speaking about facilities, maybe you can address McFeed? What's happening in McFeed?
So, we have received a proposal, so we've had an architect and a mechanical engineer visit the building. They, based on their assessment, they believe they found the causes, conservative heating system. We've sent, they've designed some specifications to rectify the situation. We've sent that to the heating company, a vendor that only provides services. They provided a quote with recommendations. We have now submitted that back to the architect and the mechanical engineer to verify that one, that will solve the problem. Until I receive confirmation from the RGV architects and the engineering company, I apologize, I can't recall any other company that RGV were in, but they work under RGV. Until they sign off that this is what will solve the problem, or they believe that this is the solution, we're kind of in a standstill. So they are reviewing it. I did speak with the architect today. He had a few questions for the company. He went through the responses. And I'm hoping to have an update for the facilities subcommittee meeting next Thursday on the 16th.
Is there any, do you anticipate returning, folks returning to McFeed this summer? I mean, I know we had talked about end of the school year, early summer. At this point, do you have any, any?
I will have a better idea, I think, by early next week. The company that is going to, that is proposing the solution has indicated there is some lead time for the equipment. They have to obtain a crane in order to lift the equipment and put it on the roof of McFeed. So it'd be tough to give you an accurate estimate. I know if all the equipment's available, and they were to get it, didn't have it in before the beginning of June, I believe, Dr. McGee, we had a discussion as administrative team, and come to the conclusion probably best, that we wait until school is out of session and then make one move, rather than, than a disjointed move, opening people at multiple points in time. But I think I'll have better information for you, Mr. Chairman, at the subcommittee meeting on Thursday, for sure.
Okay, very good. I just want to say, you know, we've been getting your reports month after month, and you've been working in both technology and you've been working facilities now for some 10 months. And sometimes I think we've taken you for granted, you know, we expect the reports, the jobs you get. We ask you to do jobs, you get them done. But I want to thank you for the work you've done, you and your staff, both in technology and facilities. It's incredible, the amount of work that's getting done now, when you compare that to so many years ago. So again, congratulations for a job well done. Any, any comments, questions of Mrs. Notoarianni? I'll make a motion then to receive and place on file the facilities update. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we will go into unfinished business. And the first thing I will do is to make a motion to remove from the table to a motion to remove from the table, to remove this item from table. The discussion approval of the transgender policy, is there a second on removing the item from the table?
Second.
Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Bojai.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke. Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. NATO.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the transgender policy, as it's been amended for first passage. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Bojai.
Yes, I want a roll call. Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. NATO.
Yes.
And Mrs. Kepiscus.
Great.
Mrs. Kepiscus, you held back some comments that you were going to make when you presented the policy subcommittee, so I'll let you go first.
Well, we did address this issue previously at our meeting. The decision was made to table, and I provided a brief summary of what occurred at our prior policy subcommittee meeting. And unfortunately, the nature of the beast appears to be that what at that time was a 24-page transgender policy, which included forms, all boiled down to one sentence with regard to the color and the nature of graduation attire. That saddened me, as a chair of the policy subcommittee, that it worked on a transgender policy, because it's so much more than that, it's not just that. But people seemed to be hung up on that issue, and as a result, we tabled the policy so that we could review it. At that time, it is a unanimous decision of the then-policy subcommittee to require that all graduation attire would be one solid color, all students wear maroon with white accents in the form of a stole, that we could certainly discuss other white accents to incorporate old-school colors. There was some parental and community pushback with regard to that, based on tradition. I expressed my concerns that focused on the annuity as opposed to transition, but at our most recent policy subcommittee meeting, the decision was made, it was moved that the policy be amended to provide student choice, so beginning with class of 2020, the students themselves would be allowed to individually select whether they live in a maroon or white at graduation. Excuse me. The subcommittee voted on it, and by a vote of six to two, that amendment was made. There were several other amendments that had to do with recommendations made by the ACLU and other community organizations, involved transgender guidance to ride, and particularly with regard to guidance to the ACLU on these issues. And the policy was amended to address the concerns that were raised by those organizations. We also made a decision to remove the forms themselves. There was a form, and then a form with instructions as to how the form would be completed. And a decision was made to remove those forms from the actual policy itself. We had pronounced concerns that students in different grade levels may have different needs, and that the form in total didn't appropriately address perhaps the needs of students in elementary school as opposed to students at high school levels. So, the forms are reduced, and now the policy is down to seven pages without those forms. It still addresses the use of dressings and locker rooms. It still addresses our participation with the rally and inter-scholastic lead with regard to sports, and all of those issues essentially turn around choice. However, they were, students are to meet with, under the policy, the students will meet with a team. The point person on that team will be the school nurse. They'll meet, develop that form, that form will remain on file with the school nurse and kept in confidentiality in the school, not reported back to central administration, but maintained in the school and provided only to staff members, not to any other volunteers who might be working in the classroom, to provide confidentiality with the students. And it is designed to address the concerns of those students and how they would like to see them addressed in the school environment. That's essentially what it's about. Again, it's much more than just graduation attire, far more than that, but it seemed to turn on just that, and that's the reason why we tabled the last meeting. But at this point, as it stands before you, by the 62 vote of the policy subcommittee, it provides for student choice. Student will select between maroon and white. I have one more thing to add with regard to that. Our current forms do not provide that choice. If you look online at Jostens, who provides our caps accounts as well as, I presume, still our classrooms, the Jostens website only provides a choice between male and female, which traditionally has been male is maroon, female is white. We would need to see to admit Jostens changes their form with regard to our school, or we would automatically be out of compliance with our own transgender policy. So, that form needs to be changed commencing with the 2020 graduation year. Quite frankly, I think it should be changed with regard to this year as well, because I believe the decision has been made that students will select whichever color they want to wear for graduation, that we are no longer following the strict guidelines of maroon, for males and females, wear white, even this year, although it's not relevant with regard to the transgender policy. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. Kepiscus. Vice Chair Burke, you're on this policy committee, so I'm going to ask you to go next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The transgender policy had been discussed by this committee over the course of three meetings, and obviously, the nature of the policy is that we were mandated by the Department of Education to have such a policy. And we were supposed to have it done a year ago, so from the great leadership of Mrs. Kepiscus, the committee went right to work to provide the workings of this policy. I think what it came down to it is that we, on the committee, we listened. We listened to all the individuals who were affected by this policy, all the individuals who will have to follow this policy. And I think that we listened, we listened to the ACLU, and we made some adjustments in our third meeting, generally dealing with definitions, if I remember correctly. We also listened to the community of Wensocket. We listened to the school, the school community. We had listened, several of us with emails from students and parents. So, I think, I think we tried to listen, and hopefully, we listened well, hopefully, we listened in the right way for people to sort of understand this particular policy. And I think ultimately, we compromised. Nobody compromises today. I think we compromised. Now, I'm sure that everybody's happy with everything that may be in this policy, but I think it is, it is right, it is fair, and I think it is, it would be good for our community, for all our students. Remember, our mandate is the safety of all our students, the education of all our students. So, I saw this whole process that we went through over three meetings as a form of listening, and finally, as a compromise. I approved the changes that we made in our last meeting. I was one of the six votes, and I will approve this policy also tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'll go next, then I'll turn it to you. I want to take this opportunity to thank Mrs. Kepiscus and Vice Chair Burke and the rest of this committee for working very hard on this, on this policy. This wasn't an easy one, and it took a lot of work, and as Vice Chair Burke says, there was a lot of compromise here. But more importantly, it's not just compromise, it's really focusing our attention, going deeper in saying, are we taking care of all our children, as Mr. Burke said? The community spoke, and we had folks that spoke at our Good and Welfare, and I can't tell you how many phone calls and emails and texts, and wherever I went, even coming out of church, I was almost manhandled by folks that wanted to address the policy, especially the colors of the caps and gowns. The outcry was such that you really found how much tradition means here for certain things. Certainly, this graduation policy, these colors mean a lot to a lot of people. And if some folks, it's not going to bother them, they couldn't care less, they can't wait to decorate their mortarboards, but definitely, the gowns had some teeth to this. The colors of these gowns mean a lot to some people. The policy right now gives the students the choice. They get to choose what they want to wear. I don't care if they wear maroon or white, but it's their choice. It's their four years of success. They're celebrating the best year, you know, their career here in Wensocket, let them wear what they want. But I do want to thank the committee for working so hard and have not stopped, and there's been a lot of, a lot of people listening to this and watching to see what we're doing. I'm very happy to see where the policy is right now, and I'll be voting for it. Mrs. Capwell.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I too wanted to extend the thanks to our, not only our policy subcommittee members that are on the school committee, but everyone else that contributed to it. It was definitely a policy that was put together with a lot of time and heart, knowing that this was going to be in the best interest of the district. And, you know, to echo what Lynn had said about being saddened that, you know, we had to table it due to the discussion around the caps and gowns, I'm happy with where it ended up. But I'm also looking at it as almost a silver lining that we live in a better world today, that we didn't have a line of people out the door debating the locker room or the bathroom policy, that instead, it was something as, you know, easily solved as the caps and gown. So, I hope that that is a telltale point. I do have a question for you, Dr. McGee. Knowing that a policy is only as good as those who uphold it, I do believe that you guys have had some conversations around how can we, as a district, best support the policy? So, I don't ask you to go into details, but just at high level so that people understand the work.
Sure. So, part of the policy is training for all staff in the district, and we're going to be training all of our staff for next year. So, that's, that's the first thing that we're going to be focusing on, so that all staff are aware, number one, of the policy, and are aware of their role with respect to implementing the policy, and, you know, what they should do, what they shouldn't do in terms of, you know, of holding that policy. So, that's really where it starts. Our administrators will obviously be, be made aware of the intricacies of the policy. One of the things that we had established about three years ago or so, just about the time the Department of Education had submitted guidelines to districts, before districts had established policies, transgender policies, there were guidelines. So, our administrators are familiar with those guidelines, and our policy is really based mostly in part off of those guidelines from the Department of Education. So, it's really just going to be educating our administrators and our staff throughout the district when it comes to, you know, implementing the policy.
Anyone else? Ms. NATO?
I'm certainly happy with the amendments we made to the policy. I certainly don't want to discriminate against anyone. I'm glad they have a choice, but I do believe in tradition, and I didn't like the fact that a policy was changed for a handful of people as opposed to majority. I still believe that most policies should be always, always have to consider the majority of people. But as it turned out, I'm happy with the fact that they have a choice and so be it. Thank you.
Anyone else? No other discussions? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Bojai.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. NATO.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Thank you all. Next, we will discuss, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the appointment of Director of Facilities. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the school committee. I would like to recommend Mr. Alfred Natariani for the position of Director of Facilities and Transportation. Mr. Natariani has established himself to be an asset to Wensocket Education Department as the acting director of facilities and transportation for the last 10 months. He graduated from Bryant University with a bachelor of science in business administration. As you are aware, he has been chief technology officer for the Wensocket Education Department since July of 2016. Prior to joining the Wensocket Education Department, Mr. Natariani was the acting director of facilities in two other districts, juggling these responsibilities along with his technology duties. Since taking on the facilities role at Wensocket, Mr. Natariani has been faced with a number of challenges. He was responsible for organizing work associated with closure, repair, and reopening of the Wensocket Area Career and Technical Center. He has also been responsible for leading the maintenance and custodial staff through the preparation of the buildings and grounds for all four seasons. Mr. Natariani understands that the goal of the Wensocket Education Department is the teaching and learning of our students. He has used this as his focus in his technology work, and now through his work in facilities and transportation. Mr. Natariani understands the opportunities and challenges faced by the Wensocket Education Department. He is familiar with all the buildings, has worked with the custodial and maintenance staff, and has established policies and procedures to continue the work needed in the district. By all accounts, he has performed his responsibilities as the acting director of facilities and transportation laudably. Based on his record of accomplishments, I highly recommend Mr. Natariani for the position of Director of Facilities and Transportation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. NATO?
I had the opportunity to observe the interviews last Monday. We have some very good candidates, but certainly, Mr. Natariani had turned out to be the shining star of the group. He has a knowledge that is incredible. He has worked on that decision for 10 months and done an excellent job, and for those reasons, he came up, number one. So, I think it's a great accomplishment. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Chairman.
Ms. Capwell.
I think you did a wonderful job, as well as listening to you and giving the accolades. I just wanted to say that I too have witnessed, since my tenure here on the school committee, Mr. Natariani's selflessness when it comes to answering text messages or emails at all hours of the night, and what he's managed to do wearing two hats has been truly commendable. So, thank you for everything you've done.
You think about, you think about that whole mold problem we had at the career center, and how much of a project that was, and you really took that by the horns, and really did a great job in making sure this project was well done. We've had HVAC issues throughout the district, and you've been right on top of that, which is good. You've asked for a couple of trucks, and somehow, you got to, I have to add that in. Look at Mr. Perry, I give you that and all that. Three trucks, three trucks. Three trucks. And everything else, everything you've been asked, we asked you to reconfigure the school, the school, you know, the school committee meetings with this. I thought that we might have gotten a lot of pushback and said, well, I don't know, we can do it magically, you and your staff, working with Dave Richards and with Dr. McGee and everybody else, you made it happen. So, it seems every time you get asked, I feel like we're rubbing a lamp. Somehow, the genie in the bottle finds a way to get it done. So, I'm very, I'm very happy to support your nomination. Anyone else? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Bojai.
Hold it. Mrs. Kepiscus?
I did. I just had one question. I don't know if I'm concerned, confused, or just a troublemaker, but I don't know how we're considering one before we consider number two. I just don't know how those two are going to work together, and maybe I'm out of order, but my concern is how are we handling that? Because I think that's relevant to the answer to number one.
I believe the answer is in the pudding. The proof is in the pudding. If we had a technology director that did his job and then said, I'm going to, on an interim basis, I'm going to take on the facilities, and we would have seen a lack of organization, a lack of ability to get the job done, projects just were not completed properly, were completed improperly. But all I've seen, all we've seen is projects, whether it's technology or facilities, have been done well, and it's not, we're interviewing to see what he can do, and we're not sure. This is a situation where, you started?
I understand all that. This has not been in any way as a dispersion against Mr. Natariani. He's been very responsive to any questions or issues with regard to the committee, with regard to the schools. He comes to CILAC, we use to explain the technology for us when we have questions in terms of testing.
in terms of testing. That's not, that's not my issue. My, my issue is in relation to, I guess, what job are we approving him for? Are we approving him now for facilities, or are we approving him for what is number two, which is some sort of combined hybrid job?
Well, the first thing we do, and having checked other districts, we want to, we want to appoint him as Director of Facilities. Now he's got two jobs.
Right.
But these two jobs can be combined. Other districts have combined directorships, and that's where we, because facilities, security, and technology are often hot and possible. So we approve the one, and then we'll go right into number two to combine.
Okay. I just, I just want, I want to clarify, my issue was technical.
No, that's all we do.
Okay, thank you.
And if the interviews hadn't gone well, and same as another candidate, then we